Is this class from pledge allegiance? Detail. Oh. Order. Er. On. Right. Ace. Care. A. Colors. Present. On.
The pledge allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order. Er. On. Order. Colors. Port. On. Oh. Er. On. Chaleski?
Here.
Cooper?
Here.
Holly? Jannelli?
Here.
Johnston?
Here.
Karat? Kathy? Manuela?
Here.
Santos?
Here.
Spolito?
Here.
All right, we have more. Recognitions.
Yes, um, we, uh, the Connecticut Association of Public Schools Superintendents have a yearly recognition. It has been going on in the state for 25 years traditionally, and there's a reception that was canceled last week because of the weather, obviously, and is rescheduled on, uh, for 5/21, I believe. I'm sorry, 6/14, June 14th, between 4:00 and 5:30. But we want to recognize the students that will be receiving the award. The awards for community service and service to others, academic prowess relative to their ability, and their leadership and service to the general community and to the school. And we'll start with... Broadview? From Southern Broadview is that? Anybody here from Broadview? Okay. Uh, Nia Sterling? Curtis Rodriguez? Right. Is there anybody here from, uh, Broadview, by the way? No? Okay. Rogers Park? Come on up, Pat. Did you wanna... Let me read this for Curtis. Curtis Rodriguez has been a student at Broadview Middle School since 2015. Curtis is a model student and human being. He always comes into class with a smile on his face and a positive attitude. He happily helps fellow students who are struggling outside the classroom. He helps to light up the stage in Broadview Theater programs and Rick the Summer Theater. He is the upbeat voice and the voice of Broadview. This charisma and charm will take him places.
Well, I'd like to introduce Viviana and Connor. I'm gonna start with Viviana. Everyone at Rogers Park knows Viviana, by the way. So she is not only well-known throughout the school, but a beloved student. She's on the high honor row and has been all three years at Rogers Park, and she really found herself academically once she came into the middle school and understands the value of a good education. She's also looking, always looking for ways to spread that value to other students. She mentors other students and is always willing to help them. She strives to be a positive influence on the people around her. She's involved in pretty much every program at Rogers Park. So if there's a program that we are promoting, Viviana is usually there. She's very involved with the Unified Sports and is the president of the National Junior Honor Society. Um, and her goal is to get other students involved in these activities as well. The National Junior Honor Society at Rogers Park is very involved with a variety of fundraisers, and they raise money for Make-A-Wish, the DOS Program, the Christopher and Dana Reeve Paralysis Foundation. Outside of school, Viviana plays many sports. She has won gold, silver, and bronze medal for track and field, a silver medal for the Newtown Memorial Day Soccer Tournament, but her biggest passion is basketball, where she won MVP at the basketball camp. And just to show a little bit of who she is, she is striving to go to Yale and wants to major in either law or medicine. She hasn't quite decided, but Yale is where she wants to go. Connor is also well-known within our school, and again, whenever there's something going on, these two students are always in the forefront. He is a member of the National Junior Honor Society. He's on the executive committee as the treasurer. Um, again, National Junior Honor Society is involved in many activities, and he's the one that planned the activity, the fundraiser for the Danbury Animal Welfare Society. He does some peer tutoring at the school, and beyond our school, he helps out at King Street after school. So he reaches out to the community as well. He was very involved in a community, uh, project that Rogers Park promoted, which was the Poseda Project through our Spanish class. And he's very involved in the SAVE Program, which is School Against Violence Everywhere Club. He is very involved in music. He's part of the orchestra where he's the lead cello. And now he's also pursuing the piano. He is into diving. He has a black belt in taekwondo. And Connor is aspiring to go to Harvard with a dual major in economics and either physics or chemistry. So congratulations to both of you.
Hi, everybody. I'd like to introduce Kayla Costa and Vinnie Trombeto. Stand up. Kayla is a member of our, uh, National Junior Honor Society. Last year she was recognized as Exchange Club for her citizenship as well. She performs with the Sons of Portugal from corps. She's a volunteer at her church. She also does a lot of volunteering around the holiday time. She's had high honors every trimester of every year, and we talked about the National Junior Honor Society. So we're proud to recognize you, Kayla. And Vinnie is also an honor student. He's received the paper of the month, has won academic awards in band, exploration, and pre-algebra. Uh, Vinnie's participated in the convention convention and the Connecticut Science Fair. Actually, Vinnie was an award winner this year at the Connecticut Science Fair. Great project that he did. Uh, he's also a member of the National Junior Honor Society. He's the vice president. So if you'd like to hear him speak instead of me, you can join us at our award ceremony, uh, in June. Um, and he also volunteers as well. We have great volunteerism at Westside, the YMCA, the June Diabetes Research Fund, the Danbury Dome, and also, Vinnie's also a very devoted member of his church as well. So I'd like to congratulate my students as well.
Ace, I'm sorry? Oh, howdy.
I do, great.
We, we did talk about, um...
Curtis.
Curtis, I guess. Is Nia here?
She had a family emergency.
Okay.
That she talked about?
Well, I'll, you know, it was so good, I wanna hear it again.
You gotta hear it again. You gotta hear it from me. This is Mr. Curtis. You've already met him. He is an extraordinary student. What I love about Curtis, he is my voice of Broadview. So that means every morning he does the announcements for the school. He tells everybody. He does everything. The only thing I do is just walk... I don't even stay in my office, do I? No. He takes care of the whole school, tells them everything they have to do, from the lunch wave all the way to all the emergencies. He is an honor student. I don't know how the heck he does it. He's an honor student. He's involved in theater. And just for record, you should give his autograph tonight because he's going to be famous, and you wanna make sure you get that autograph. I have a couple. And one of the things we're proud about him is he's a leader, but he's a, one of those silent leaders. In other words, he leads by his actions, not by what he says, and everyone's following him. So I am just very proud to present him, and, uh, we give him a round of applause. And I saw his parents, and I just wanted them to stand up too, because, you know, you can't have this without that. So, thank you. Nia Sterling's also a wonderful student. She, I had her from Pembroke all the way up to now, and it's just so amazing to see her develop into this incredible, intelligent, smart young lady. She's been on the honor row since kindergarten all the way up to eighth grade, and we're just really proud of her. She's a kind person, too. And one thing you hear, usually teachers have their favorites, I, everybody likes Nia. There's not a favorite. They just all like her. So I'm just really proud. She couldn't be with us because she had a little emergency at her family, but, um, you'll get to see her in the future, I am sure. Thank you for the opportunity.
Ace, is anybody from Ace here? Any students here from Ace? Well, we had Sarah Foster and Eddie Cortez Torres are the two students to be recognized. We'll recognize them at the function. But are they here? The kids here? No? Danbury High School.
Oh, here you go. I only see one of ours here. That's Holly Ritter. Should we stand Holly? Uh, you might recognize Holly. She was here two, two weeks ago for another award, and it's very unusual for a Danbury High School student to win two awards like this. But when you read exactly what Dr. Sal said about what this scholarship entails, I immediately went back to Holly, because the driving force behind one of this one is community service. And hours upon hours of community, I'm talking hundreds of hours of community service, and not just one project, but many different projects that she's part of. Her main one, I'd probably say Special Olympics is her main one, where she's a driving force, been doing it since she was little, along with her father who's filming me, Greg Wager. Who also should be congratulated for the hours that he spends running Special Olympics in Danbury from here all the way up to the regional level, uh, where he coaches students and participates in running the tournaments, uh, the meets and things like that. So should be congratulated. Holly's also very unique, because she's gonna go to college next year in Springfield, correct? Where she's gonna be playing two sports, field hockey and lacrosse, uh, which is really unheard of in college, but she is not only in the school tremendous asset in what she does in Danbury High School for her community work, but in the classroom as well and on the athletic fields. And it's a rarity to find someone who has all three of those components and works as hard as she does. So congratulations to Holly.
I, I didn't ask, but would the parents of the youngsters that received the award that are here just stand so we can see them and say thank you?
Okay, public participation. Everybody signed on here. So Board of Ed welcomes public participation. Ask speakers to limit their comments to three minutes. Speakers may offer objective comments of school operations and programs that concern them. The board will not permit any expressions of personal complaints or defamatory comments about Board of Education personnel and students, nor against any person connected with the Danbury Public School system. First one up, Teresa Lopez.
Hi. Um, so I just wanted to say, you know, good evening to all of you, and, um, you know, thank you for the opportunity, for, you know, allowing me to speak. Um, I'm just here today just to talk about, you know, the STEPS Program at, um, Broadview Middle School. Um, you know, I did read that statement there when I first walked in, and I'm actually here just to talk about what a wonderful teacher Mr. Herzog is. I have a whole statement printed out. You could all have a copy of it, because it'll probably go over the three minutes. Um, but, you know, I'm just a little disappointed. Um, you know, he's gone again for a second term, um, this year, and, you know, it's just a bunch of questions of why. And, you know, I honestly couldn't imagine why. And, you know, I can't imagine, you know, the first time the situation occurred that the administration would allow somebody back in the classroom that was, you know, guilty of any kind of accusation. So, you know, throughout the year, my, you know, questions have been responded by everyone with things like, you know, it's investor insurance of the students.
Can I, can I excuse for a second?
I have a concern about talking about a member of the faculty in this context.
Okay, and, okay, because it had happened.
Well, we're talking about his status, where he is. I have a concern about having those conversations in public.
Okay, so, um, we would be pleased to take the statements that you have in writing, but because it's an ongoing situation, our council has suggested that we not discuss it in public at this point.
Okay.
So, but we can take, we can take anything that you have written and put it into the record.
Okay.
Isn't this, isn't this a public forum? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
It is, but, but there, but there's no speaking, if there's an ongoing investigation, public.
But we, as parents, that are concerned with our kids in that particular class, all right, have been through this before with a very egregious situation that happened. I am Bob Evans, a parent of twin boys that are autistic.
That's right. But we have, this is the situation, and it, and the forum from our council has said that this isn't the right forum to open it up.
What is, what is the forum?
Yeah, where is that place?
We've been, we've been pushed.
You certainly, I know you have been told, um, the special ed director and the superintendent are available to speak with you, but in this public forum, we can't have a conversation about members of our staff, about their status, where they are, if they're in and out of the classroom. This is not, this public forum is not, unfortunately, not one that we can have that conversation.
But we, we reached out to the superintendent last week and haven't received the return form.
I would recommend a meeting after this. Um, if you wanna speak after, that would be a more appropriate place to have this conversation.
If any of you have anything in writing that you wanna put into the record now, we can take that.
Yeah, where do we put that?
Uh, you can bring it right up here. You can give it to us.
I didn't know how many people were here, so there's...
That's fine. We'll distribute it, and we'll give it to everybody. And your concerns, if you guys wanna stay until the end of the meeting and address anything.
Appreciate the opportunity, guys. Wish you guys would be a little more open to if you're, if you're really happy to have kids, parents. Thanks.
All right. So, uh, the, everybody else that's on here had the same speaking, in the same charms?
Well, I can say, I've been a Danbury resident for 12 years now, and my greatest disappointment in living in Danbury has been the public school system. I hate to say it. Uh, I feel like my kids have been let down severely. We're, you know, in the process of filing for due process for what are my disabled children, and now the other one's getting screwed as well, again. And it's just, it's, it's disheartening. And so we thought, we could, we could, you know, address the people who are responsible for overseeing that education.
We, I appreciate your, your, your outreach. Uh, the problem being that if, under council, we, I will discuss it afterwards. If we can reopen this up, we can reach back out to you. But I think under the, under this circumstance, if that's the recommendation here, we don't wanna, also don't wanna put anything in jeopardy, you know, from a legal standpoint either, you know, so we have to discuss it. And I didn't realize that it wasn't acceptable to, to talk about it previous to right now. So without making that decision in public, I think we can discuss it afterwards. And if we can, we have your information here, and I will personally reach back out to you if we can discuss it. Okay? Sorry about that.
My name's Greg Stan. I give you guys all this. Shame on all yous. Especially, you know exactly who I'm talking to. Shame on everyone who used to say that you can't bring this up to speak about our special needs son or daughter that's in that classroom. I don't, my, I'm not, I'm not here to, to give any teacher a pat on the back. I'm here for my son, and that's it. For you guys to sit here and say you ain't gonna talk about it, but I can talk to you after. No. Why? Because it's on camera?
That's not the particular reason for it. It's not, it's not, if you wanna discuss...
Who is your counsel, if you don't mind me asking? And you are?
My name is Kim Thompson. I'm the HR Director and the legal counsel to the board.
Okay, and you, you have it in writing that questions like this cannot be answered?
I advise the board on, on what is appropriate conversation for public session.
And could I ask you, what would you consider appropriate?
I would be happy to talk with you outside of the meeting.
Why does it have to be after?
Be happy to talk with you outside of the meeting, but I...
Why does it have to be after the meeting, though? You're a counselor. You're a whole lot more educated than I am. Explain to me why I can't talk about my son's, his education.
I understand. You are able to talk about your individual child and his education with the people that have been made available to you.
Okay.
Um, but in this forum, both the board's bylaws and state law and, and the manner in which we treat employees requires that we don't have these conversations in public.
Okay.
So my question... We're not asking for a conversation. We're just asking to make a statement. We're not asking for a response in this forum.
I understand. I understand.
We wanna make sure that you're informed in a public setting, so that the public, it's on the record what's been discussed. We're not asking for a response today.
I understand.
We don't normally give responses to the, to anything in that effect, but the problem is that we have to oblige by what we think is the right thing to do without jeopardizing anybody in the meantime. So if we can have the chance to converse about it, and if we can do it, we will certainly reach back out.
One more thing, if I may. I don't know where I would do to make a motion. I'd like Dr. Sal to terminate Kelly Truce's position.
That's, that is unacceptable.
No, it's not.
Yeah, no, it is. Actually, it's the, it's the...
When my son, when my son is in this school and he's untreated, he's barely, don't tell me that I'm the one.
Sir, you can't discuss that, and there's no...
What are you handing us? What?
Any, right here. I read it before we started. There will be, the board will not permit any expressions of personal complaint or defamatory comments about Board of Education personnel.
What are you guys doing here?
So can I finish, please?
Unbelievable.
Personnel, students, nor against any person connected with the school board. That's, that's the forum in which we're sitting now. If you'd like to discuss something afterwards, I'll...
No, I'm not. No, no, no. But I'm not saying, you guys, we're good.
Thank you.
And you are?
Patrick Johnston. My name's right here. I'm the chairman.
You're chairman.
Sorry. I do the best I can. I volunteer for this board.
Well, you should be a little bit more easy when it comes to my children, being their safety and anything else that happens.
We're trying to keep decorum in, in this process right now. I've offered to talk to you afterwards.
What?
As has our council.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll take it. We're there.
That's fine.
I'd like to leave my statement here, since I cannot read it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Can I completely find it? Unacceptable that your parents cannot voice our opinion and at least say what's going, what's happened in Bill Herzog's classroom. And I think that you guys should investigate it. That's a shame when you guys...
Yes, I think that's the process that's going on, but thank you for your concern.
Not investigate Bill. You guys investigate the administration, please. Is that unacceptable?
Okay. Anybody else care to speak before we're done with public participation? Anybody? Thank you. All right, the consent calendar. Mr. Matrina?
If the Board of Education approves, the items on the consent calendar exhibits 18-64 through 18-66 as recommended.
We have a motion?
Sure.
Seconded by Mrs. Cooper. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. All right, so everything we have there?
Yep.
Employee representative, Danbury High School. Spotlight your school.
So this is our, our Danbury High School Spotlight tonight. Um, it was supposed to be at the end of June, where we had the, uh, the band, the fire trucks, the Hawaiian dancers. Everybody was coming at that point, but since we got moved up to, uh, early May, because we felt this would be a good time to do it, uh, it's not as flashy as you've seen for some of the middle schools and elementary schools. Uh, we're just kinda gonna go by the numbers. We, when looking at this, we thought about, uh, we would just talk a little bit about it, and then we go on our tour. We didn't realize the tour was before, so we were caught off a little bit. But I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Martins for the beginning part of this.
So, um, the mission statement is something that we revised a few years ago and really grounds the work that we do here. Um, this building, we look at how all students are performing. And the "all" is bold. I'm not a fan of capitalizing things and bolding things, but this "all" gets both, because we really are here to support the learning and progression of all of our students. Let's give you a snapshot of our enrollment around October 1st. These are the, the numbers that get reported to the state in terms of how many students we currently have. And so at that time, we were at 3,061, um, which is at least 100 students over where we were last time. You can see, um, that our demographics have certainly shifted over the past few years, and, um, right now, we have a much larger population of English language learners who are arriving to this country without formal schooling necessarily. Um, and so the needs of populations change, and we work really hard to try and be nimble and responsive to the students who are in front of us. Um, the free and reduced lunch number is up as well, um, and we anticipate these numbers growing again, which is why we just concluded the tour of the new building. So, um, I know that you, the board has had some information about STAR, and so I don't wanna get too technical, but I do think that it's worth noting that, um, in terms of student growth points, we're averaging over 50, which is, um, a tremendous statement about the work that our faculty is doing in the classrooms. Um, we started last year, Stacy Brugnolo, our ESL department head, and the faculty of the ESL department were really instrumental in creating some celebratory moments for our ESL students who had a GPA of 3.0 or higher. So, um, this year, we recognized 118 students who, um, were able to achieve that goal. This year, we have 11 students participating in the Teaching Fellows Program that I know that you've received some information. And to date, 166 college course classes have been taken by our DECO students, and we're just incredibly proud of how hard they are working. Uh, we have a lot of honor societies, you know. One of the benefits of being such a large school is that we're able to, um, offer so many different opportunities for students. And so, um, we have 92 students. I'm not gonna read all of the numbers, um, but, uh, you know, just a few years ago, we really only had the honors, National Honor Society and the National Arts Honor Society, and we've expanded that, you know, exponentially over the last few years as, um, our students are expanding what, what they want to participate in. And also, this helps to get access to other scholarships, and so, um, we're really pleased with the number of students who are participating. So we're around 700 graduates. Final count isn't in yet, um, but we processed almost 3,200 college applications. You know, we recognize that not everybody is going to college, but our job is to make sure that if a student wants to do that, that they are prepared to do that, and they're supported through the application process as well as the financial aid process. It can be very, very overwhelming to navigate all of that, especially for families who just haven't had the experience. So our counseling department made it a priority to ensure that they were working with students to start the application process and to help them, to help them get that submitted before they leave, even if they're planning to take a gap year, um, which is becoming more common, students saying, "I need a year off before I get back on the, the, the education train," so to speak. Um, and so we're extremely pleased with, with these numbers. We've just started counting the application piece. We always know how many kids go, but we wanna have a sense of how many were accepted, so we have a sense of whether it was finances or a family circumstance. You know, we wanna make sure that that application was submitted. Uh, so this, just a continuation of our college application stats. Uh, we have almost 1,100 AP classes being taken, and that is an extremely impressive number. Um, we're also very pleased to see that the classes are much more diversified than they were a few years ago, and so the demographics are of advanced placement, are beginning to more closely mirror the population of the school. Um, the, the second to last bullet is, is really critical. Um, a lot of kids will get to college. A lot of kids do not go back for a second year. And so we started taking a look at what's called the retention rates in the Connecticut University System, where we can access information. And 78% is above the state average in terms of how many students return for a second year, so we're incredibly proud of that number. Um, our scholarship awards evening didn't happen yet, but we anticipate distributing more than $200,000 in scholarships to our students this year. Here's a snapshot of some of the universities that our students are attending. And we'll make this presentation available to... And we'll make this presentation available too, so that we have electronic, if you need it. Just a word, you know, all of these wonderful figures don't happen unless you have a staff that's as dedicated and capable as the staff that we're lucky enough to work with at Danbury High School. We have a lot of professional development opportunities that are sometimes grassroots, so the new teacher support session is led by a teacher. I work with her to identify what are some topics and those kinds of things, but really we're looking to build some capacity for administrators and provide opportunities for leadership in the building for aspiring teachers. We have a coach for, for our PSYOP program, that's the instructional protocol that we use working with second language students. Instructional rounds are something that our faculty participate in, where we visit each other's classrooms, we identify how are things going according to our school improvement plan, and we create professional development in response to what teachers are seeing during those visits. Unfortunately, with Friday and tornadoes and everything else that we've been enduring lately, we were not able to provide that professional development that we had intended, but that was created by the twenty-eight freshman academy teachers as we get ready to move to block. And so, we try and tap into our expertise when, when we can and do a lot of collection of information to make sure that we have a good sense of what's working in the classroom, where we need to provide additional assistance. I can turn it over to Mr. Donovan to continue bragging about our kids.
This is something we're extremely proud of as well as all of our student awards, and while I'm not going to sit here and lead all of them to you, there are some that are just extremely noticeable. For example, our Hatters Herald newspaper, every year wins an award for excellence, and this year it came out as one of the highest achieving ones in all of New England, so we're very proud of it. We were a little bit hesitant when we went from no more printing to online, just trying to follow the trend of media, and it's turned out very well. So that is one of the ones, besides the individual kid ones, that is, we're very proud of. Continued, you know, the future business leaders of America, we had a whole bunch of kids that qualified for state competitions, first place we had two of them, one for coding programming, one for computer applications, which is trying to lead our way into our computer AP courses and how we're trying to bolster that program and our STEM stuff throughout the school. Continued, the DECA National Conference winners, these are the students out of our DECA program, and if today is a perfect example, we had a group of real estate brokers that came into the school, where our DECA kids put on a presentation for them, made informational packets for them that they can have in their offices if anybody asks any questions about the Danbury Public Schools. They created a short video that highlights our school, so if anybody has information, realtors are not allowed to turn you one way or another when buying a house, so they have this information there for anybody who wants to, and it's all the information, not just about Danbury High School, even though it's a little Danbury High School heavy, it's about K-12, all the way through elementaries, these students went around and got blurbs from each elementary school, all the middle schools to talk about what they're doing, what they're proud of, just to highlight what we do at Danbury High School. And continued. And continued. And continued. And these are the ones we know about.
Right.
This, this is, things that come across our emails that, hey, congratulations, so-and-so, even that scholarship number of two hundred and ten thousand, that's what Danbury High School's giving out and stuff that we've had, not what someone else got an award, like we may not know about the Kalanis Club one or the Leo Club one, these are the ones that are coming out from our offices and stuff like that. Our faculty, as Dr. Martins mentioned, is spectacular in itself, and we highlighted four people that won some significant awards this year. Mr. Jack Tracy, one of our physics teachers, he got a special grant to go to Hawaii, timely enough as it is to work with, on volcanoes, so I think he's still going. But this is a perfect time for him to go there and get that information. Ms. McKenzie is involved with our School of Rock Grant for our rock band class, and she won an award for writing an original song. Nicole Martone, our DH, is on the National Council Teachers of English, and Dr. Martins herself is a member of the Nellie Mae Foundation Speakers Bureau, so they should be commended on the work that they do, and that's all outside. Our, our family connections are very important to us, trying to get families involved in Danbury High School is difficult, and there's a couple of reasons why. One, language would be an issue for some of us, other ones, when they get to high school, a lot of parents feel they're in high school, they're kind of on their own, especially junior or senior year, that I don't need to go to the open house, or I don't need to involve myself a little bit more. So, these are all some of the things we do. Highlighting the college application nights, as Dr. Martins mentioned, college applications and FAFSA and all those things are confusing to anybody. So we try to provide a lot of assistance around them, we bring in Nogatuck Valley to talk about what they, how they do it, we bring in Westcon to talk about how they do it, just to provide as much support to parents as we possibly can. Go ahead, Chris. So, one of the things we just sent out, part of our TVAL plan is a family survey, and we tried it this year to send it out as an email and a Google form to see what responses we got back, we didn't get the responses that we wanted, the number, but what we did get back was pretty favorable. We only asked, I believe, eight questions and left it open for comments at the end, but as you can see, most of the responses were favorable, you know, lowest being seventy-eight and seventy-nine, which we're going to take as not awesome numbers at all, but that's what we're going to focus next year as a school for our teacher evaluation plan. So, with, satisfied with the communication I received from my child's teacher, we're going to formulate action steps in a plan so our teachers communicate more with homes, and that's one of the problems we're going to work on next year, and at least one adult in school, my child feels comfortable talking about personal issues. We have an advisory program that we're redoing next year in terms of a flex program, so we're going to try to see if we can get that number a little higher, because what we know is we definitely want students feeling comfortable to go to someone to talk to, and whether that's a counselor, or, or a teacher, or administrator, they need someone to go talk to. They're running into, it's a tough world out there right now, we were a little sheltered when we were growing up, not for them. Information is coming very quickly at students, they're dealing with a little bit more than, a lot more than we were growing up, so it's important that they have someone to go to, and that's what we're doing. Just like the other, these are athletic accomplishments. All right, watch this, here you go, Chris, go ahead, go, that's one, that's two, keep going. You know, our boys' track team, girls' track team, wrestling, basketball, baseball's out there right now, I think softball unfortunately just lost in the quarterfinals of the FCAC today, so our athletic programs are doing extremely well. Lacrosse made, boys lacrosse made the state tournament this year, and again, this is our coaches, our coaches are now being highlighted, Coach Shook, Murray, big one is the FCAC Coaches of Excellence, Fraticelli, Murray, Ricky Shook, Casey Bach, Joanne Tatcher-Zickings for cheerleading, so we're pushing all this stuff out, and this is above and beyond the classroom, this is extra. So when we're talking about students working, they are, are working not only in the classroom, but hours after to make sure that all those team qualifiers that you see there are doing on the courts or fields, and it's attributed to them for what they're doing, not even to mention. Looking ahead, this is where we're going next year, we obviously, we've been talking about block, right now, we're currently building it in the computer, once since we had the go-ahead, we're not running into a problem with facilities, we're running into a little bit of a problem with the actual program that does it, it can't handle a school this size. It's called the engine, is what we call it, and the engine gets caught up thinking about how it's going to schedule, you know, forty health classrooms, and it's not used to working with numbers like that, so we're running into a little bit of a problem like that, but tech is on it and they're doing a great job. We're opening up the new buildings, we have a lot of things in place, ready to go, we're just waiting on that one thing, which is the schedule to come out, to see how it fills and how it goes, and we're going to go with it. Our flex time, we've discussed with you before, is something we're really, really still excited about, the more we sit as an administrative team or with teachers and talk about it, we can start seeing teachers getting excited about the possibilities they could do. We talked about flex time as having two main drivers, one is providing extensions for kids, who push them a little further, and those students that aren't up to where we would like them to be providing a little bit of remediation. That's the first go-around, the second go-around to that is now getting kids interested in stuff, so we can run classes and flex times, things that they can go explore, new options, and teachers are getting very excited about having the possibility of even running a yoga once a month and teaching kids about that, so it's starting to get some traction. Next year, we are entering our NEASC self-study, which is kind of a, a pretty big task to take on, we had a gentleman come down from NEASC and met with the whole staff and our steering committee and our standards committees to talk about the process, the board will be involved in that process, you will be interviewed by them and to see what your role is in, in this, and they'll come out with a list of recommendations for us and how we can improve our school. By no means are we scared of this process at all, this process is, does anything, it tells us, a group of other educators from districts in Connecticut, New York, all the way up to New Hampshire, Maine are going to come and look at us and, and tell us what we can do to get better. And any type of information, Chris, what'd you do?
That's the end.
Oh, any type of information we can have for that is something that we will use, so we're, we're looking forward to that. Another thing that we're working on with our School Governance Council right now is our district envision of a DHS graduate. What does a DHS graduate look like? So, once we get that from the stu, School Governance Council, then we're going to take it and look at the parents and the teachers, we'll send it out and see businesses as well to see what they need from our graduates, and then we're going to turn it over to Dr. Sal and say, here's what the high school came out, and then he's going to, or we're going to look at how we can, does the middle school align to what our vision is, does elementary align to what our vision is, does it, so our whole, what a DHS graduate looks like is K-12 all the way through, and everything we do is focusing on that, and that's kind of what our drivers are for next year. Questions? Thank you, have a good night.
Before the gentleman left, if anybody, anybody who's left who wants to get ahold of me, my name on it, go to the Board of Ed website and send me an email, I'd be more than happy to address any issues that we didn't get to here after we have a meeting afterwards, so thank you. All right, student rep. Have any student reps? All right, action, presentation, that was it, school and action items.
All right, that the Board of Education approve and set the school district's budget in the amount of one hundred and thirty-two million, two hundred and thirty-six thousand, a three point one one percent increase for the fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen in accordance with eighteen dash six seven.
Second.
One second.
Mrs. Cooper will second it, any discussion? Hearing none, can we have a, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain, motion carries.
That the Board of Education accept the April twenty eighteen Operating Results Analysis General Fund in accordance with eighteen dash six eight.
Second.
Seconded again by Mrs. Cooper, any discussion? Question?
To Joe, on your line number, excuse me, one sixteen, where it says teaching substitutes. Any month of day expenditure, you got a negative number, how does that come about?
Correct, we had a, we billed back teachers from the Alliance Issue Grant, so inside that grant, because it got set up so late, we expended those dollars out of general fund ahead of time, so we had a reimbursement come back in, so it was a net credit for the month.
So, it's a retro adjustment for the rest of the year?
Yeah, it's a retro for the month, so yeah, so in a sense, we, we- In order to keep all the PD running that we had, we had to credit that back, so that's why I've got the negative, you'll see that a few places in the budget, I think, because we, like I said, we finally got that grant online and functioning.
Kim, are we still having problems with substitutes in terms of availability?
It's ebbing and flowing, honestly, for us right now, we're having more trouble having substitutes in the pool commit to the vacancies than we have, so our fill rate, our utilization rate in that pool is a little lower than ordinarily. I'm going to do an interview next week, it might even be this week, of a recruiter for the pool, but that probably, we won't get much traction on that until the pool starts to build up in the summer for the fall, because our experience is a lot of people will onboard, we'll go through the process and get them ready, and then they'll get other jobs over the summer, so we'll lose them, so we'll kind of start that recruiting process at job fairs and that kind of thing over the summer, and get people teed up and then start to onboard them as we get ready for the new year. So, we're going to limp to the finish line like we do every year in the spring, but hopefully with interventionists finishing their jobs, they'll flood back into the pool and they'll provide a little bit more support as well. We'll see.
Thank you.
We are going to convene sort of a feedback committee of representative principals, one of the things that you might remember, we went to kind of a little bit of a different system this year where we're noticing that we're doing a lot of during the day meetings, so it might be a grade level meeting, it might be a leadership team meeting, and so a lot of those pre-planned and pre-organized meetings that require four or five subs to a building was draining a lot of our pool on any given day, so we tried pairing them up, we tried putting designated days every month for them to hold those meetings, we're going to do a feedback meeting with a lot of the principals, primarily elementary, we don't have as much of a problem at the secondary level, primarily elementary to see if we can't brainstorm what was working, what wasn't working well, and that will kind of dovetail nicely with the recruiter coming in and us trying to look at kind of overall structure, are we priced correctly, do we have enough people, how do we get more people, so those two processes will start to kind of link up. So it should, we should have some time over the summer to really get something a little bit different out of the running.
We did interview two companies that were just outrageously expensive, but interviewing them, we learned a lot in terms of things that we should do that would make us much more effective, and we're taking components of it, and the primary one is getting about three, trying, our goal is to get three hundred into the pool, I mean, that was the both groups that, so with this recruiter, we think that'll give us a start. We're working with Southern, Southern with their, we incentivized the recruitment with them, so if we can get twenty permanent subs, that will really help us as well.
Does the key word, I mean, you mentioned the word incentive, and generally, I think subs are tied all over, but to incentivize them, them to stay with Danbury, if you took a hundred and eighty days and say, okay, to a sub, if you stay with us for, and your forty-first day, you get a bump in, in pay, in your eighty-first day, you get another bump, so it gives them an incentive to say, okay, let me stay in Danbury, as opposed to going to some other district because I pick up more money and you go to the end.
So, we already do that for a continuous assignment, we do do that bump up, and it's a pretty significant bump up after that fortieth day, and one of the things we are looking at is can we pick a number, maybe it's twenty days, where if you've worked twenty days in the district this year, then you will launch up another, you know, five to ten dollars. Our base rate is competitive with our neighbors, and so what we're looking at is exactly that incentive piece, the problem is implementing it, so someone has to be, we have to have a vehicle, because we don't have, in our system, it won't go ping, this person's worked this many days. So, part of it is really how we implement, and that's one of the things that I'll work on with my team, who would be responsible for sort of monitoring that, but that's exactly the kind of idea we were looking at, we looked at, you know, because of the data coming out of ASOP, it's very easy to run all kinds of reports, so we can see, you know, Fridays used to be very high absentee dates for us as were Mondays, we see now some considerable absenteeism on Tuesdays, which are our early release days, a couple of days a month, so we're definitely looking at patterns and trends, and I will say your administrators are doing an excellent job of identifying chronic absenteeism, so we can handle those pieces, but I think you're right, I think some kind of incentive, and it's really just a question of, with nine hundred and forty teachers and maybe a hundred and sixty subs on any given day, how are we going to implement this graduated system with any kind of, you know, without putting one full-time person on it every day?
And the computer system that you put in a couple of years ago-
Yeah.
-I'm sure helps, but if I were looking for, if I were sub and looking for the job the next day, I would sort of do it the night before, go in, but there's always, there's always the element of that particular day, people, for whatever reason, can't come to work and call up, and, and that's where you're, I think where you get bogged down, right, to get somebody readily on the spot, you can call them seven o'clock in the morning and say, you know, can you be here at eight thirty or whatever?
Right, right, and part of that is a little bit of an administrator culture change because the, the meetings that are booked far in advance, those are the ones that we have a hundred percent fill rate on, you know, people will say, I'm going to come every Tuesday for your building, whatever it is, and part of it is conditioning our building administrators, if you have a building-based sub, you don't assign that person to the long-term meeting, you assign that person to the early morning call-out. So, part of that is just a culture change, and now, I think we've made some good progress on that, but that's another thing that this focus group will be a good idea because it will get, you know, everybody kind of thinking about the issue again. And I think the problem is, you know, for me, and it's the age-old problem, I'm not on the ground in every one of these buildings, and you get to a day where, and we have this back and forth, all of a sudden, you're down, four people call out sick, and, you know, you don't have any subs that want to take the job, and you're canceling meetings, and some, a lot of it is on the fly, and so I think that, you know, the, the goal for us has got to be a bigger pool, but not just bodies bigger, but people who want to take the jobs, and, and that's the part that we struggle, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just want to ask Kim a question, if someone has taught like elementary education end agenda, what I, three or five years, can they come here, do they have to have Connecticut certificate?
No, so anybody with a bachelor's degree can substitute teach, and the only time that they're required to have certification is if they're doing a long-term assignment in the same position. So if somebody's out on maternity leave for six months and we need somebody to cover for six months, that person would need certification in Connecticut, but anybody with a bachelor's degree can. And, and those, you know, the folks that we have that retire from our district or neighboring districts, as we're saying, congratulations, here's your clock, also can we put you in the sub pool? So, we do try to get folks in, you know, as they're, as they're leaving us as well, and for those who want to do a little events planning, they can pick their days, and, you know, those who want to just get a call in the morning can do that too.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Closed, abstain, motion carries. Motion carries?
All right. That the Board of Education accept the April 2018 Operating Results Analysis Grants Projects in accordance with eighteen dash six-nine.
I'll second.
Mrs. Cooper. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries?
I thank Joe for the next one.
It could have been worse.
Yeah. That the Board of Education accept the following school construction projects as complete and authorizes the superintendent of schools to certify and execute the SCG dash zero-four-nine F form. Zero-three-four dash zero-one-three-eight Millridge School. Zero-three-four dash zero-one-three-nine Park Avenue School. Zero-three-four dash zero-one-four-zero Shelter Rock School. Zero-three-four dash zero-one-four-one Stadley Rough School. Zero-three-four dash zero-one-four-two King Street Intermediate Roof. Zero-three-four dash zero-one-four-three Hayestown Roof. Zero-three-four dash zero-one-four-four Moore Street Roof. Zero-three-four dash zero-one-four-five South Street Roof. Zero-three-four dash zero-one-four-seven Rogers Park Roof. Zero-three-four dash zero-one-four-eight Shelter Rock Portables.
I think I missed one. Could you?
No, Mr. Turner.
Any, any discussion on the?
Second.
Just a.
Do we get a second?
No, we did not get a second.
I thought Mrs. Cooper.
I'll second.
All right. We have a second.
Just a question. So, these projects are, have been completed.
These are, that the Board of Education is accepting them. Now, if you don't want them, I guess you could return the schools. I probably don't want to. No, this is an ongoing problem with school construction in Hartford. There's a lot of changers on all these projects. So, Antonio and myself, when talking to construction, it's like, for example, some of these had, you know, thirty or forty changers, literally list out every nut and bolt that went into the change. So, school construction has stacks miles high. So, we actually kind of negotiated an agreement on how to close these out, because there's probably two or three million dollars in reimbursable dollars the city is owed on these projects.
Okay.
So, that's why you see something, obviously, Park Ave was done, what, four years ago and all those. So, I mean, there's.
Yeah, because the same, a lot of these projects were last summer.
Yeah, yeah. We've been scrambling trying to get them closed, but they finally accepted our deal.
So, they close them out and then eventually the city gets that?
The city will get the reimbursement. We're hopeful by June or July. It is in bonding, so in a sense, it does go to pay down the debt. It's not a case of it's a true, you know, cash-back kind of deal, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Okay. So, any other discussion? Okay, we have second. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries?
All right. That the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute interschool lunch agreements with St. Peter, St. Gregory, and Pathways.
Seconded by Mr. Santos. Any discussion?
Can someone just clarify what would be the interschool?
These are partnerships that Sedexo makes to have food, facilitate food service in those schools. In other words, your general contract has the agreement, obviously, any Danbury public schools, but we are allowed to partner with the private schools for food service. And this is the agreement that allows us to do that.
Okay, so, so I'm, I'm trying to understand. I think Sedexo is its own company, but somehow we also have oversight of who they enter into agreements with?
Correct, because we contract directly with Sedexo. And at the bottom of the contract, it states that they may partner with other schools. It's a net neutral. In other words, there's no profit or loss for servicing these schools. If it's a two-dollar lunch, it's usually two dollars in labor is how it breaks down. So, it just, it allows us to service those kids as well.
It's our kids in some of the parochial.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're almost our Danbury kids anyway, and it's just.
They're Danbury kids.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm trying to understand, as a business, like, why would they need our permission to enter into contract with other schools? That's more of my question, where I figured they were free to do that.
You'd like to get twenty percent?
Transmit my question. There you go. That's what I'm trying to hear here.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries?
All right. Since there's two motions attached, I'm going to split this. That the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent of schools to submit Form ED-099 to the Connecticut State Department of Education stating that the Board will participate in Section Three of Connecticut General Statute, Section Ten dash two-one-five-F, as, as eighteen dash seventy.
Do we have second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries? Second portion?
Second portion. Healthy foods exemptions. As per Section Three of Connecticut General Statute, Section Ten dash two-one-five-F, the Board of Education may permit the sale of other food items that do not meet the Connecticut nutrition standards, provided that, one, the sale is in connection with the, with an event occurring after the end of a regular school day or the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. Three, the beverages are not sold from a vending machine or school store. Motion that the Board of Education allow the sale to students of any legal foods not listed in Section Three of Connecticut General Statute, Section Ten dash two-one-five-F, at all co-curricular-sponsored events, such as sporting events, school performances, school dances, PTO-sponsored events, theatrical products, and school fairs, provided that the exemption criteria are met.
Any discussion? Or that, well, we need a second on that, right?
We need a second.
We need a second.
I'll second it, but I just got finished.
Mr. Santos. And discussion, Mr. Santos?
Since bringing up healthy foods, wasn't there something with the recent Patterson Cafe here that they couldn't serve students?
Yes.
What was the, the end result of it?
We helped, the State of Connecticut Health Board came in and reviewed the menu. And there was some items being served, there was since non-compliant with, for example, like white bread versus whole wheat bread. And we did actually resubmit all those menus with, actually, we used the Sedexo dietitian and Mr. Turner, and we are fully cleared now to serve. We reopen. Good to go.
Any other discussion?
Just a point of caution or a correction in the record that maybe should be theatrical productions in school fairs instead of theatrical products.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Do you read at school?
I don't.
I just read what's here. So noted.
I got one job.
And you do it quite well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries? Dr. Sal's report.
I'd like to start with C.
Sure. As the Board may or may not be aware, our current financial software package we have dates back to, I believe, it's about fifteen-some odd years old. We had looked at partnering with the city and upgrade our current package. The cost, to be honest, was in the five-hundred-thousand-dollar range or higher, and I thought that was not really prudent in our current environment for that now. The city, the city was looking at a possible upgrade as well. We thought maybe we could go together and kind of partner. Frankly, there wasn't enough savings to justify the cost. So, our current vendor has an upgrade to its current product, which will allow us to do significantly more, such as employee portals, a lot more electronic transactions. It's hot, it's hosted in the cloud. For example, we had the trailer and a generator at Beaver Brook on where our data was now Wednesday or Thursday to fire off our payroll, because we do have a locally-hosted server. Our current support, our current package is about fifty thousand dollars a year. The new upgraded package, we bought eighty-five thousand a year. And again, we wouldn't roll this or change this to probably really next budget cycle as well. It gives us a lot of upgrades. You know, is it the best of the best? No, but it's not a half-million dollars. You're talking thirty-five thousand dollars a year, which really isn't much for dollars. There's a lot of employee savings time in between HR and payroll and, and finance. There's a lot more things we need electronically. I could bring harder numbers back to the Board, but again, I just kind of put this on, on discussion for tonight. I want to make the Board aware. There is a statute, I forget when it was passed this year or last year, about partnering with the city and working together on these packages. I did have a conversation with the city finance director. He did feel it was, you know, ill-advised if we should actually try to partner and go into what they had, because again, cost is just far greater. And again, we, we're an expense center. We don't really have a full revenue stream from the city. We essentially just call the city and they send us money up to our allocation, where the city has permitting and all those other pieces that the Board will never use. So, I did meet with the vendor already. I think it's prudent to kind of explore this. There's enough integration with Aesop, as Kim was alluding to the other time with our sub software. I think it's, it's worth, it's a simple upgrade for the Board. We have to bid it out with this upgrade that we have. I just want to prize the Board, that's at least the action that we're looking at.
I think, you know, number of times when we lose power, this is hosted in the cloud.
We have, right now, it's hosted in the basement, where this is in the clouds. You know, it's much more redundant, it's much more secure. Yeah, I mean, so there's a lot, and the cost is not astronomical. Again, we, I looked at the other product, it literally is a half-million dollars.
I'm assuming that, you know, the, the security system going out to the cloud, we're feeling warm and fuzzy about what they provide for protection and something like this, or?
There's, yeah, there's, they, they're also, the product is Power School, which is underneath our current Power School system. So, they actually join together, so we can actually cross-feed. When a teacher gets added in HR, it will actually populate, pre-populate over into Power School, and they'll then pick up that and they'll schedule that teacher. So, there's a lot more integration between the two. I mean, I think it's a lot more tightly integrated, so, yeah, overall.
I think, I, my team sat in on the demo of both the products, and I think it's almost like a hamster in the basement for the system we have now. And just with the increased reporting that we do, the fact that it speaks so well to the other systems that we're using is going to allow us to really streamline. We, we are trying as a team to move to much more electronic onboarding, but we've built what we have. And so, if we can connect all these systems together, it's just going to make a much easier process. To give you some idea, right now, I have two and a half people processing, you know, new applicants. We'll bring in well over three hundred summer school employees just for that period of time for summer school. We'll bring in, you know, a hundred teachers. We'll bring in several hundred tutors, all in a very limited window of time. So, if we can do anything to streamline this process, that's going to make it much easier for us to physically get people through the system and moving, so.
And Newtown's also looking at converting, so we think there'd be some shared as far as PD dollars. So, I like, I think it's, it's prudent, it's, it's an easy way to get an upgrade and truly gain, gain a lot of resources, probably not really a lot of cost, so.
I wanted to ask about reporting. You kind of touched on it, but for financials, for the Board to view, kind of the.
The budget in a sense, the document you get is pretty much, is very much built by hand today. And it's built out of my office, kind of Excel, one Excel cell at a time. The new system will allow much more, basically dumping of salary data directly in. I am hopeful to some Mary, as we talked about, that Alliance Grant does get very, you know, it's convoluted through the budget document, because there's so many bodies shifting back and forth of FTEs. You're going to see another big shift with the grant we've got now. So, yeah, I do hope there's a way to, in a sense, get a, I think this allows us to do that. It's much, much more powerful. It's got an analytics tool. We don't have any of that in this now. I would never come to the Board asking for, I mean, you know, I don't want to spend money on anything if I don't have to. But, I mean, it really is, it is a hamster world.
Could I just ask, with, with the sharing and you, this integrating, and, and, you know, I think it makes it easier for everyone, and I don't have any problem with that, because we all have to make things comfortable and easy. My concern is, will there be any type of confidential information that's coming out once you integrate that we might not want someone at City Hall to sit?
Oh, no, this is not integrated at City Hall. No, no. The, the original plan, when we had talked, we looked at the shared system between both of us originally. The cost of even the Board going, it was about a half-million dollars. So, it really, there was no point in us sharing, didn't save any money, so cost is far. So, this is, this is our own, our own server, our own shingle, our own little world. So, I think it's a better thing.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. Is that good for discussion? Okay, Dr. Sal. A or B?
Joe, B.
All right. Well, okay. District copy release and the technology release. As the Board may or may not know, again, I exhibit the follow-up probably next meeting. We have a technology lease that sits with the city of Danbury. It was in a capital technology fund, about a quarter of a million dollars. It was a five-year lease. That lease has now ended, and so has the capital technology fund that we had. As part of the budget and different needs, which I get, the, the four million dollars we did receive, there was a reduction in that technology capital account. So, there goes, that leaves me hanging up in middle schools. We've had a pretty nice replacement cycle running with the big leases, middle school, high school, and elementary. And through that process, I've got to now find a way to get some of that leasing dollars back into the operational budget. As part of that, our copy release ends this summer. We own, it's a four-year lease with a dollar out. So, at that point, we don't, now own our machines. So, our machines, I don't want to own anymore because they're tired. Other machines are not in, they're in pretty decent shape. We did buy cannons, which are, I believe, top of the line, you know, as, as we have. So, I did speak to the current vendor, who is on, on a Pepple bid, which again, the Board could apprise to use. And we would do an extension on the current, but we would replace probably half or so of the fleet. We're doing an evaluation right now. So, it wouldn't be a fifth year, if the Board members and folks around, we did an extension one year, and the copiers like fell apart and like the bearing shot out the side of them. This would be an evaluation of the current fleet based on the mileage on them, and we would then do a replacement. I believe the current lease is about a hundred and ten thousand for the actual equipment, that kind of support. I think we'd probably do a new lease for all fifty thousand and take a chunk of that dollars and put it towards the technology capital fund, so you can continue to do the lease and do the copier lease. So, I think it's at least kind of a two-sided deal. The other piece is, not to go on tonight, the current copiers we have are integrated into everything we do. It's based on our badge system. So, the IT department spent half a summer integrating this piece of software. One of the risks, frankly, going out to bid, is if the current vendor did lose, the, the work falls to us, in a sense, recreate and re-link all these pieces together. So, I think there's also the badging system. There's a lot of expense the Board has already incurred to do this. So, I, I would advise it's somewhat prudent to, again, keep half of the fleet, replace half, or at least in a sense, what is truly beyond its life, and then kind of move forward or at least in a sense, what is truly beyond its life, and then kind of move forward at a later date, and whether we rebid the fleet or do something more.
Is that going to last like, one more year?
Yeah, we probably will be another one or two, and maybe we'll do another partial lease, or something along those lines. It's, it just, I mean, there's, I would say half of the fleet right now is probably in good shape, you know, there is a chunk of the fleet, particularly in this building, they're tired, you know, three, four, five million copies, and some of these machines are probably built for three million. They're covered in the service contract, doesn't matter, but you can only repair something so many times, it's kind of like a car, when it gets to a certain point, it, no matter what you do to it, they really can't be fixed. So I, again, I'll come back with better numbers next meeting, but I mean, that's something I'm exploring now with the current vendor. Again, with the idea to hopefully preserve the technology lease and continue the copier lease, because again, money's not easily found, so at least allow me to do both.
Question, Joe, do you see in a future a reduction of this type of equipment, the need for it, with going more digital?
No.
No?
No. When I got here, we ran 27 million copies, we now run about 33 million. A lot of your-
Why is that?
A lot of your curriculum is still paper-based, and being it's more digital, a lot more still gets printed for teachers, teachers still have a lot of binders and stuff for their curriculum, there's a lot, we still see a lot of, I mean, I've not seen any, the badge system alone was supposed to save five and 10%, I can tell you, your wastepaper baskets are empty, because people don't generally print, you know, a whole million things, you have to actually release your job at the machine, but even that is not curb use. I mean, I see a lot of, there's a lot of manipulatives that get used in the classroom with some of our K-5 curriculum, where it's literally like pieces that get cut out to piece together for some of the word work. So, no, I, and honestly, the paperless world is just, is just not there. I mean, and we've done a lot, there's a lot of shared docs and Google Docs, a lot of stuff, but I'm not seeing any curb use at all. And it's not abuse, it's just, it's just the demands of the curriculum, we have less textbooks, and there's a lot more of those resources, so. I, yeah, I'd love to say, sure, we could do that, but, no, it's just really-
And even at the high school level?
No, high school level, yeah, I mean, you know, you got machines here, five million copies on their own, I mean, there's, it's, it demands gone up, the math curriculum, much more, much more paper-intensive, essentially, just about paper manipulatives, a lot more.
And the badge system is really that?
The badge system is helpful, I mean, if, years ago, if you walked around the schools, you would see recycling bins overflowing with stuff, because if you clicked print from your machine back in the day, it would just fire out of the copier, where now you have to physically go up to the machine, swipe your badge, and release your job.
What about the pen?
So in a sense, yeah, so someone might say, oh, it's this, oh, throw it out, oh, where'd it go? So now you actually physically have to be there, it makes it more secure, because you can't print off like an IEP and leave it on a copier, so it's far better, but we've, I've seen less waste, but just more use. Go to A.
This is, yeah, the drum roll, please.
Well, I, I think I, you see, just give me a second. I have a letter for you to look at. You know, we had the, we had three schools, Hayestown, Broadview, and Pembroke, that due to the water problem, the drainage break, the water main break, Pembroke was a power outage, who were, we were looking at making up their, their day, and on the last day, which was the 29th, that was before last week. When that happened, we wound up, as you know, out for three days. Those three days put, put us in a position not to complete our statutory requirement of 180 days. There is a provision within the statute to appeal, it's almost like an act of God event, that to ask for a waiver. It's peculiar, because a waiver's not going to be given to anyone unless they go into July, you're prohibited from doing that. So the standard for us, if, right now, what, everyone, we need to pick up one day, so going the last day to June 29th will give us 179 days. I intend on letting the youngsters leave early, so there's also what they call a post day for teachers, they will stay that day, clean their rooms, they're ready for summer school, because they would normally be here the day after the kids leave, or the day after the kids leave, because they have to fill the five days, so we're going to do that. So right now, we're going to do that, but the students were taking this coming Friday, which was a PD day, as you know, making a full day. I canceled the release day for today, just to have the hours, the kids are out of school enough. So we're doing what we can, and I'd like to petition the state, send this out to tomorrow, and have them consider waiving one day for the, all of the schools, and then a second day for those three schools that I mentioned, that require two days of excuse waiver, so.
Sal, you aware of all the denials, right, that the-
Well, yeah, I am, and primarily, this is the reason, in fact, I talked to many of them, when they were thinking about it. A waiver, pure and simple, they're not going to be a waiver because Danbury doesn't have air conditioning, and I don't think the kids can be here, that's not their problem. They're not going to give me a waiver if there's a storm and I close school, when we have days to use, and we do not have days to use. Timing for us, we took Friday, and that's it, and then we're going to apply after Monday, and if they grant us today, then we don't have to go. But if we had some days left in our calendar, they wouldn't give us this, if we could make the 180 up.
The other districts, yeah, they have those days.
The other ones, to my knowledge, the ones that I talked to, four districts specifically, they all had days, and they were, they figured they'd give it a shot, I think. That's my understanding. But you don't have the days, you can't go on Saturdays, you can't go hours more during the day, you can't hit two for a day, and like I say, no Saturdays, no Sundays, so you're left with allowing me to petition the commissioner and having them respond.
Did they turn it down, and would you actually have to go one more day into July?
No.
Can't, if the state wants it, right?
We can't, they can't. Well, you know, I don't want to speculate, but, you know, I would say a prudent, rational person with this kind of data would make a sensible decision. The law says I can't go in July, I have no other days. Right, it makes sense. So that's why, this isn't like it happened a month ago, where we could have planned a little differently, it happened now. And, you know, parents think, well, for me, so you know, you know, I worry about the days at the end when I call school off, no, I worry about the kids getting to school and safety, you know, I mean, couldn't we have come in a day, I don't play that game, I mean, I don't give a count. Just, you know, when they say it's too dangerous for our buses and kids to be there, it's a no-brainer for me.
We talk to Paul Esteban extensively, pretty much every day.
And that's what we have to do. And, okay, so we're one short, and I think they'll be reasonable about it, given that we made the adjustment for Friday, we're bringing everybody back and-
So just, just a question for the future, if we start seeing more of these very bizarre, aggressive weather-related events in Connecticut, which is an unusual thing for us, and we're starting to see an increase on the strength of some of these storms, how many days, do you think that maybe something we should talk to Ryan about the next session, for him to see if we can put a good legislative together, to put in, to create some language that says that a specific waiver for, when an area is deemed a natural disaster, or a formal, you know, disaster kind of certification issued to a specific area that's been affected, there is, you know, a built-in already, kind of like streamlined process for a waiver, what, you know what I'm saying, with a catastrophic weather event, like, you know, if we were lucky that we were not hit as hard as some of the other communities, but if you have a cyclone, go through your community, and then you get stuck with this kind of, you know, so I just think that maybe just in the future-
One of the things Fred's been talking about, you recall, is a blended program, where the Midwest gets hit with this more often than we do, where, for example, had we had the opportunity last week, we could have gotten credit for a day by doing the work at home. So there is something around, they're talking up to five days a year where you could have a reciprocal day, let me use it that way, that we haven't set up, so we could have taken last Thursday and Friday, and it's kind of to get there, and we're looking at that, and connection, this part, and I said we would participate with them to look at it.
I think just be wise to take, to think towards the future, so we don't get caught in situations, because it looks like weather related events are getting stronger and impossible.
I had a few parents come to me and say, maybe we should lean back after, now that the building construction's done, and try and push our start date back a little bit, if not the whole way, but try and scoop a few more days early, giving us more lead in the end of the year, since we have a fixed stop date.
Exactly.
Can't go July 1st, but we can go to school earlier.
Right, that's it. The other thing I think we've done that the other districts didn't, to my knowledge, we set graduation at the beginning of the year. When we hit 185, we could graduate. We're, we don't have a moving date, so that, that helped us get through that part. We have to offer a program to the youngsters, so we can do that, or we can look at the start date, because we have been starting after Labor Day, and, you know, three days on one side.
Whatever we can do to be proactive, I think, the best thing is to get it.
I think that's what the state might come back, but the blended idea was interesting, you know, for a lot of ways. I also put in a three-hour delay for next year, in our option.
Yeah, there's a couple of schools that do it.
Yeah, that, it's, you know, at times when I talk to the folks, they'll say, you know, with the sun coming up, if we have a little more time for the fabric to work, we can run the buses, but the buses of the high schools start normally at six, and the delay, they start picking up at eight, right, Dan, around five to eight? So this, they'll start picking up at nine o'clock, which would give us a little more of an option to hedge, if we could open up and save-
Count towards the position.
Yeah, so I think we're working on it. So anyway, I'm going to send this to the, tomorrow, and we'll see what goes with that.
One closer on the storm, as the board would realize, like usual, our nurses actually pitched in at the Weston Shelter, Kathy O'Dowd was there staffing that, I believe, overnight.
And several other nurses.
I want to say the Broadview nurse, Renee Scasey, and there was another one, too, the room-
There was two other nurses.
Yeah, the room pitching in, so, you know, very nice.
You know, whenever there's a disaster, you hear the people get up to the mic and say, and I got to thank these people, I always think it's weird, but I got to tell you, EverSource was really committed away from us more often for a time, and it was your own workers here in town that got us into a position, so that we were able to start, so at some point, we ought to have them here to say thank you, you did a great job.
Yeah, the city crews, Tim Norman's group was really instrumental.
All of them, they just, they were just, they were phenomenal.
And Paul Esteban, I don't think slept for like, five or six days, when he literally was just-
He kept calling us every two hours, that's how I was, they would do that in the morning and at night. And he was, so we should say something, they were just great.
They were.
Just great, so, thank you.
Okay, do you have anything under discussion that you wanted to do with that?
No, I, there was, there was a-
All right, information?
AIS, Frank left, they were named US, the Blue Ribbon for Green School.
Chris.
Chris, I mean, Chris AIS, Chris's school. You know, I mean, I guess there'll be a program in Washington for them, which is, they've been working on it for years.
Yeah, multiple, yeah.
Their doctoral work was around, you know, around this program, so it was great to proceed.
And composting, and rainwater harvesting, and everything else they do out there, yeah.
They're great.
Because it was a, I just want the board to know, it was quite an extensive application process, to even be considered a green ribbon, and it was a true collaborative effort among parents and teachers, so it was a huge application, a huge process.
You got a million dollars?
No.
Well, they can-
They got a green ribbon, that's what they got.
Well, he was hoping that that much is-
My green cat.
We got a giant-sized green ribbon to Quirrell's High School.
That's great. The Puerto Rico trip going out, Shelter Rock principal, I have that on there, because, you know, Janelle's leaving, Dr. Gibson, he'll be leaving mid, somewhere mid-June, correct, a little earlier, and Linda, his assistant, will be assigned for the last two weeks, as the principal there. As you know, we're on the search, and you're going to talk about that somewhere in here?
I'll go right now.
Okay, under discussion, can we do it right now?
We are back, we will back up to discussion.
Sure, sure. Okay, so we are hopping in the Office of Talent Management, we are rolling people through. We are doing the candidates for the ACE, the Alternative School Principal, tomorrow. Mr. Janela's going to join us tomorrow, so thank you for that. Next week, on Wednesday, will be the Assistant Principal for Rogers Park, we were supposed to do it during the storm and had to reschedule, so I will need someone among you, I'm trying to kind of spread the love here to all of you, but somebody, and I'll tell you all of what I need, and then you all can check your calendars at a later time. Wednesday, May the 30th, Rogers Park, that will be an all-day affair for Assistant Principal. I want to say there's seven candidates on the docket, so that'll be a long day. And then the following week, which is the first week of June, on Tuesday and Thursday, that's what I'd like to talk about next. On Tuesday, the 5th, we have scheduled the Director of Assessment, the Curriculum and Assessment Person, that we have put into the organizational chart. That is scheduled for June the 5th, there is a, there are a tremendous number of really excellent applicants, lots of really interesting people with interesting backgrounds. If you hold on to that thought for a minute, that's Tuesday, and on Thursday of that same week, we're going to do the Assistant Superintendent. So, to talk for a minute about process, as you know, all of these positions I bring to you have been two-panel processes, and that's under your board policy, which says Superintendent, members of the cabinet, and principals and assistant principals go through that process. What I would like you to consider tonight is, we feel strongly that the Curriculum and Assessment Person on Tuesday, and the Assistant Superintendent on Thursday are going to be very closely connected. We are looking at a common writing prompt, so asking them to look at the same data, and we are looking at common questions, because a lot of the content is going to really overlap. Ordinarily, what I would say to you is that for the Director of Curriculum and Instruction, that would not require the multi-panel process, but there is a management hire provision in your policies that talk about having a board member, or having members of the community involved. The Assistant Superintendent technically requires the two-panel process. What I'm advocating that you do is, we set up one panel of about eight people, we get the broad spectrum of everyone, you know, so a board member, a member from the community, members of curriculum team, other principals, and we use that same panel on Tuesday and on Thursday. And that way, because we have this rich pool of candidates who are interested, many of them in both positions, if we decide after the final round with the superintendent that maybe this person might be better suited for this position, that we would then have the facility to be able to kind of move them. So it seems to make a lot of sense to me, I think having one panel on Tuesday, and then having two panels running on Thursday is a bit overkill, I think we're just going to be adding a lot of people that may not have anything other than a redundant purpose. So what I'd like you to consider is suspending that two-panel process for the Assistant Superintendent on Thursday, and running one panel on Thursday and one panel on Tuesday, and have it be the same panel for both positions, if that makes sense.
So just to clarify-
Yep.
Because of my recent experience with this, so both pools of applicants are going to go through both panels, but in two separate days?
No, there will be one panel on each day. Because what happens is, like the panel that you set up, so when we're looking for a principal, we have two panels, so we have the curriculum folks, other principals, people that talk about kind of content, theory, pedagogy, and then we have the other panel, which by policy is those most likely to be affected by the hire. So it's teachers, it's PTA members, it's, you know, different community folks. The Assistant Superintendent is a little bit different from that, so it's still, that person is really going to be working in close collaboration with the Director of Curriculum and Instruction, but also having this other function with the, with the teams, doing Title One, working with finance, so, so it seems to me that what I would do in that situation for the Assistant Superintendent is I would have two, if I did do the two panels, they would both look very similar, they would have the same kinds of people on both of them, because those are the people most likely to be affected by that person. So that, to me, seems redundant. Does that make sense?
Don't you think, don't you think though, having the same group of people, you lose objectivity in terms of viewing the candidates?
I think that what having the same group does is it gives continuity, because we'll spend some real time focusing on what we're looking for, for both of those positions, and there's going to be some real sort of content overlap, credential overlap, way of thinking overlap for those two people. So I think it's going to be important that there's a unity of purpose. The other is, if we do get in a situation, because as I said, a majority of the candidates for both of those positions applied for both, if I don't have the same panel, and we decide to do that, we're going to have to reconvene another set of panels.
But, but my question wasn't, I know what this, I was asking too, is that, so the candidates for the Assistant, for the, for the Curriculum Position and the Assistant Superintendent are both going to go through, they're only going to have one panel?
Yep.
Like a combined panel?
Yep.
Or they're going to have the same experience of having the admin, so to speak?
Yep.
Panel?
Yep.
And then having the other, is it just having the panels in different days, or is it that we're actually changing the process, and they're just going to be interviewed by one panel that they-
The second.
Okay.
The second, gotcha. Because the Assistant Superintendent, I guess what I'm suggesting to you is, to follow your policy and create two panels, a panel of administrators and a panel of people most likely to be affected by the hire, those two panels are going to look very similar, they're going to be almost the same category of people.
Okay.
Because the Assistant Superintendent is not day-to-day working with teachers, and you know, that person's working with administrators, so those two panels wouldn't be composed the same way, and that'd be redundant.
Okay.
So that's why I think it may be a little bit. And then there'll still be another round with the Superintendent and-
And what's the makeup of that panel, what does it look like to you?
So it's a little broader than what you've got now, so it would include, obviously, Board of Ed representation, it includes Associate Principals for Instruction at the middle school and high school level, it includes principals from the elementary and secondary level, both of whom also have some connection to DSAA, the Administrators Union. It would include a teacher, probably the Teachers Union President, so that person would also be there. It would include a community engagement person, AMBE would be the most obvious choice for that. So that would also get our community concerns and district concerns in one person. I think we're looking at, those were the primaries.
And how many, I'm just trying to-
We're looking at about probably eight people.
Okay. So, I'm not sure if the other members of the board agree, but I look at it, especially the Assistant Superintendent position, that we would be some of the people that will also be working the most with the Assistant, so that, in this case, that we should have more than just one member of the board sitting on the panel.
I think that's okay, what I would think about, though, is logistics, because you won't have enough time for everyone sitting around the table to ask a question, right? Because if you have more than seven or eight people in the room, unless you have a one-hour interview, you're not going to have enough time for everybody to participate. That's not to say it's not a good idea, what we have done in other circumstances, is we've had sort of people around the table, and then other people kind of in the second row, that's a rough situation for someone coming in to interview, right, to see sort of two tiers of people sitting watching the responses, but it's absolutely something that we could do, if you want more people listening, you know, if you want to participate. But I think logistics are a little-
Yeah, I did, Emmanuel, that there should be more than just one board member on there, because of the seriousness of the position and the interaction, and also if time needed, then we extend it to one hour, so that everybody has the ability to ask a question. I mean, this is not a low-level position-
No, no.
And I think the determination of it is crucial to the district.
Yeah, I would tell you to do that, we will need two days for both positions, if we do that, if we extend to an hour, and we see all the people that we've screened to look at, we would probably need four full days of interviewing.
Sometimes, you know, rather than do it all in one time, you sort of get, you know, the poor person at the last one is, you know, getting to shut in the distinct, because people are tired and stuff like that, and so it's-
That's right, I just also think, especially with the Assistant Superintendent position, you know, in another 12 years, when Sal decides to retire, his goal is 24, you know, we might be looking at, you know, some internal applications, which would be this future Assistant, you know, Superintendent as well, so I just think that it's a crucial position for the future of the, of the system, that, that just a thought.
Taking two board members, if you have one, the two board members, that's, it gets extended. Our only concern, it's not a concern, just taking people out of, out of the school, and if the board, if we do it, which is fine, having two, sensible, it's just got to be the same people, right?
Yeah.
That's all, so that we don't have, and that's fine with-
And that, and that is, to please appreciate that, I think we've done, we're doing, one, two, three, four, five, about seven or eight administrators, and the administrator team that's doing the interviewing is largely the same, because there are not a lot of them, so they've already been out several, and I'm not saying they wouldn't, they, they all volunteer, they all have to be first to the table, but it's a lot of time for them right now to be out of the building as well.
Do we have to change the policy, or make an adjustment somewhere?
No, I think right now, just the conversation is fine, the directive is that we're not gonna adhere to the two-panel system for the Assistant Superintendent position, and that I will add, you know, pick two, and again, anybody that wants to.
Do we have to hope on that, or do we?
No, I think you, as you have consensus here to do that.
So how are we gonna get the name to pad?
So I, yeah, so I, just to recap, I would like names for, um, maybe Wednesday, May the thirtieth, for Rogers Park Assistant Principal, um, I guess two board members for both June fifth and June seventh.
You need one for the thirtieth?
Uh, one for the thirtieth.
And two for the fifth and the seventh.
Yep, and, and, and one for, um, the twelfth, which is a, hold on, June the twelfth, which is a Tuesday, and that will be for Shelter Rock.
Shelter's on the.
And we're talking eight to, eight to four, right?
I would plan on eight to four, because they're fairly large pools.
For, and, the Shelter Rock is also on all the.
Yeah, right now, we're, we're doing some screening, and I think you should plan on that big a four days.
Wednesday is the, uh, the ACE, is that the thirtieth?
No, the thirty, Wednesday the thirtieth is Rogers Park.
Oh, Rogers Park, I'm sorry.
Tuesday the fifth is the Director of Curriculum Instruction.
Right, seventh.
Thursday the seventh is the Assistant Superintendent, and Tuesday the twelfth is the Shelter Rock Principal, and tomorrow is ACE, and a partnership.
I can volunteer for the fifth and the seventh.
Okay.
Okay, if anybody else wants.
Me too.
Okay, so, but both date?
Yes.
And you think it's gonna be just two days, or you think it may actually be more, and if it is, are you guys available for?
I'll have to look at the, we'll look at the numbers again, we'll chart it out and see what we think we can realistically do.
Okay, anybody available for the thirtieth?
Which girl is that?
That's the Rogers Park.
The thirtieth is Rogers Park.
I could do the fifth and the seventh, but I can't do the others.
I think also, Kim, we need to be careful, because going back a couple of years, when we had two board members, we had certain board members that agreed to come, they, they would only come one day, and then they want, they would do one day, and then after the second day, they couldn't come.
Yeah.
So I think we really need to be careful and think about what we're doing, and how we're going to do this, 'cause it is a full commitment.
It is.
And some members decided way back, well, I'm only gonna come to this, this particular session, I'm not gonna go to the first session, so, you know, I'm a committed person, if I'm gonna do Tuesday, I'm gonna do Tuesday and Wednesday, you know, unless it's a really emergency, so when you commit, commit.
Did you, I mean, is there anybody else that wanted to go to the fifth and seventh, or, I mean, so Rachel is available.
I can do the fifth and seventh, but I can't do the other dates.
So it's even, so.
It's good that we even have an alternate then.
You can have an alternate, yeah.
So then you have a backup.
Yeah, and then we can decide.
You're doing Tuesday Shelter Rock?
Uh, Tuesday the twelfth, Shelter Rock, do you do that?
I can do Tuesday, yeah, in the morning, yes, one day.
Yeah, all day, yeah, yep.
I would like to commit, but I can't.
I know, your workday's, I know, I know.
Trying. Yeah, I know.
All right.
What we need is the thirtieth then, right?
Yeah, just the thirtieth.
If we don't.
Well, maybe somebody who's not here, that's always.
Yeah, we're just gonna try, if need be, if we can't get anybody, I'll do it.
Would you go over what we have to sign?
Right, so, right now, for, um, we're looking for someone for the thirtieth, for the fifth and the seventh, we've got three people, so we'll have the one alternate, we have Rich Jannelli, Emmanuel, and Rachel, and then for the twelfth, we have Miss Scoop. And I think that's gonna be, barring any unforeseen circumstances, and then those who are not doing that are already committed to negotiations, because those are also coming, those are also significantly happening tonight, yep, um, right, 'cause I think you're doing Secretaries?
Yes, I am.
Um, and then, I can't remember what we decided for School Lunch and Safety Advocates, I need to go back and look and see, I know we had some people that, I know Fred had expressed an interest, um, and those are Secretaries that are gonna kick off, I think it's the third week of June, and I'm trying right now to get some days in for Safety Advocates and School Lunch, but those will go through the summer.
Will those be all day?
No, those are usually just two-hour increments, and, and, you know, I can plan around your schedule, if you wanna participate in that, absolutely, um, maybe we can talk after, um, because, yeah, that's, it's, I just think it's good for everybody to kind of see as many different things as you can.
Thank you.
Uh, we have the Re-Race Program Enhancement Project, I guess, just off of information, and then, just for Monday, how many are gonna march into parade, just so that we know? One, two, three, four. So we have two cars? So, you'll, would you be sure to call Debbie and let her know, and then she'll call the, um, the marshal, and then see if they'll permit two cars, I know they'll permit one.
Do you have to pay for the second?
Uh, no, but they're really.
Nothing's free.
Get the trolley.
Can I make a note?
Yes, go, go ahead.
I just wanted to notify the Board of Education members that the unified race that was planned for Rogers Park that needed to be postponed has been rescheduled, it'll be June fourth at one PM at Rogers Park, so, you guys are all invited, and we'll follow up with any email communication.
June fourth at four PM?
One PM.
One PM.
Same time, just on June fourth, yes.
I was gonna show up tomorrow, come tomorrow.
Okay, where are we at now?
Executive Session, Board Chair Report.
Yes, um, I don't have a Board Chair Report, the, I, um, did you, did you want to talk to those people before we go?
In the information section or discussion, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
So, it's my understanding, thanks to the hard work of Representative Arcani and Representative Ferguson, we were able to get eighty percent of the.
Correct, on the portables.
On the portables, is that correct?
Yes, which takes your reimbursement from about six hundred thousand, give or take eight hundred thousand, so. Less money, fine.
And the bids went out?
Yeah, bids are out, um, there is a walkthrough, they're due back June second, very competitive bid, we have three big portable players, which should give us, I think, a pretty rock-bottom bid, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Jannelli. I just wanted to reiterate what Mr. Donovan said earlier, this morning, the DECA kids made a presentation to the real estate people, and there was a good number that were there, the presentation was outstanding, uh, and also, Mr. Donovan had a tour of the, at the end of the people taken through the, the new wing, one of the, the highlights of the demonstrations, when the kids passed out the, the booklets that we had gotten once before, they had a pen in there asking if everybody had a pen, and normally you go to events and you get a pen that says whatever the event is, this was quite clever, if you opened the top of the pen, it had a flash drive, and that flash drive was a presentation in it, so the relator actually had the pen with him, and just put it in their laptop computer to show a two perspective, if they knew, so that was really a highlight, and I think impressed everybody, the other negative thing is, one person made a comment, a lot of people don't like to go to Danbury Schools because of test scores, which we all know that test scores are not, you know, they're not the all with it, so I think it's something that we should look at, and, and there was a conversation that we had too, that what we offer here is a well-rounded person that makes them ready for the real world, and so I think that's the challenge to, to the opposition, just looking at test scores, but it was an incredible, uh, presentation, and something that I think we should be proud of our students doing, so it was good.
Thank you, Mr. Jannelli, um, so, I think that closes, or, do we have something?
I wanna, some want this to come to the end like it did last year, at the end of school, Joe, when there were so many parents or students, quite a few students, um, had balances with some decks, so, uh, you know, I don't know how early they started the administration, well, the principal ended up teaching the school, or the staff started notifying parents, but, you know, I had about five parents that, I sort of had to calm down last year, because they had to run over to, uh, Orson Street and try to pay off six dollars, five dollars, or whatever, so I think it's the best interest for this, the, the, the staff to start notifying parents if there's a balance that their child owe.
Yeah, there, we've been doing robo calls now weekly, so if you've got, we, we did, I'm not even in the backpack home now, and we have seen quite a significant influx of balances being paid and, and screwed off, so, um, we, we do see that, um, they have actually come down significantly since we did that, I will say, um, there's still balances out that are ugly with those, with those families, but there, there, we have seen a lot, so, yeah, they definitely have been notified, uh, the robos go out and they do know, reads off their kid's name, and their balance, it's a, to whatever number they've listed, so.
Is there a bottom-line number that it goes out for, 'cause I think what I'm hearing, are these about the graduates?
Yes.
So, that's a different question, yeah?
No, just regular students that owes them.
So not just the graduates that are being helped from graduation?
Any, any, what we, what we changed was originally, if you had any low balance, I mean, if you had like three or four dollars on your account, you'd get a call, and what we did was, we stopped that, because we have some kids that don't eat, they may eat once a month, so they have a few bucks on their account, and the parents got out of their way, because since they get a call every week, their balance was low, so we reprogrammed now, so it's now, if you're zero or lower, you'll get a call, so if you owe a balance, you truly will get a call, so we, we did kind of tweak that out some, but, yeah, any balance that's negative, um, folks are getting calls, and, and we have seen, again, significant uptick in, in cash, so that's good.
My last question.
Sure.
To, Mr. Donovan, I know he's still in, in the audience, it's a concern for me, as I looked at the, um, don't get old, that's, you know, you know what I'm talking, as I looked at the script, and I looked at, how do we recruit, or how do you know, or I didn't see any students going to any of the Southern colleges to, into the teaching profession.
We have used our connection with WestCon.
My hearing is sort of off, so, I need to hear that, good voice.
Dan's so quiet, you know?
We have a teaching fellowship pipeline with WestCon.
Okay.
And we offer classes here, they get college credit for, and they do that, um, gets them on the track from becoming a teacher. The numbers, unfortunately, a lot of kids are not interested in becoming teachers.
Right.
While they're in school, you know, they have to go out to college, and they go, hey, I actually kind of like this, um, but that's one of the things we're using to try to get them into, to go in there.
My concern, again, as, as we go through the process, and as we start looking for a diversified staff teaching our students, how do we get, and I know you can't answer this, because I pondered parents, when I go to meetings, and I ponder people at my church, how do we get our kids to start looking at the teaching profession, it's a beautiful profession, so all of a sudden, we have, I can name at my church a couple of kids, everybody's going into every kind of profession, but no one is talking about teaching, so how can, how can we expect the administration to pull into a pool of people that they're not going into that profession?
I can't answer that question, I can't, I can't control what kids are going into, you know, I can get them there, I mean, I know for myself, I was not an education undergrad, I didn't find my passion for education until after I graduated and started studying at Danbury, that I actually realized I liked it, uh, so, you know, my degree is in Criminal Justice, it's not, so I had to go back and get classes, so I find that's where we're getting a lot of people from, when they go out into corporate, and they realize they're sitting behind a desk talking to no one all day, that this isn't for them, and then they come back, that's where we're getting a lot of them, but we do have our, like I just mentioned, the, the pipeline with WestCon, for those kids now that are interested in it, which is not a very big number at all, no one wants to be a teacher.
Do any of our graduates, or do you do any type of, uh, communication with any of the Southern colleges, so that, I know they know that they're there, because I know that they're there.
Um, I can't, I can't speak to that, I know Ms. Thompson can, when, I know we've been to several recruiting fairs this year already, uh, we don't go down south to go to recruiting fairs, they're more up here, uh, but I, I, you can probably speak to that.
No, I, I think, I think, Mr. Cooper, what you're getting at too is, is the exposure of kids to go to those schools and then come back, and I know that there are other districts, because at, at a lot of those, um, conventions that we go to, those convenings we go to, I've talked to other districts, that will have a teacher do a college visit, you know, with a big bus, and they take the bus down south, and, and it strikes me that it's the personal connection to some of those institutions from members of our community that fuels that bus trip of kids to go on that college tour, I don't know, I don't.
We don't go down south, but we take busloads of kids.
Right.
You know, I know that the church does too, they take, they, all summer long, they're touring, you know, mainly because of where we are, it's more of the state schools, uh, because of the pricing and stuff like that, they tour all of them, we just had a, a bus of ELL students that went up to Post University, uh, because they have a great ELL program for, for those kids going to college, so we're, we're trying to build a huge partnership with them, uh, they just came back with allowing me to give more Principal to President scholarships if they're called, where the kids will get fifteen thousand dollars if they, they fill, meet all the requirements that they want, so we are working with that, it's just in the field of education, becoming a teacher is, it's a calling, and a lot of high school kids aren't ready for that yet, 'cause they're still dealing with us as, you know, I, I don't wanna be that person sitting there, but there are some that, that do, and they love it, and most of it comes out of our early childhood programs downstairs, where, uh, those kids wanna go into early childhood education, elementary education, but there's very few that say, hey, I wanna be a, you know, a sole-stay teacher when I, when I get there.
I think you'll find, I, I think you'll find too, at, um, some of our elementary schools and in our middle schools, that there is much more, um, the faculty is much more, um, promoting about where they went to college, which colleges they went to, to try to give kids at a much earlier age exposure to that idea, and I think that's also starting to get some traction, just that idea that, not only that this might be a path for you, but here's a place where you might think about as younger kids, um, and I have had conversations with administrators about, you know, um, um, Young Teachers of America at the high school level, but that that's too late, that, you know, if we can push that down further, and I think it's just a, a matter of getting a groundswell of interest among the kids that will support that kind of a program as well.
Thank you very much.
One other thing, just to add, is your middle schools are also doing, um, your school counselors are doing career fairs, where they're bringing in a host of professions, I mean, upwards of eighty people from the community, including educators, um, that are really promoting and exposing kids to start thinking about, um, just, you know, here's a wide variety of careers that are available to you, kids at that age tend to know, like, what their parents do, or, you know, friends of the family, that kind of thing, um, and just, and it's all student-selected, they get to pick three different careers that they wanna go and listen and learn more about, um, so it also gears toward those kids' interest, and like Kim had said, they're also doing some promotion of, you know, every staff member, where the college you attended, or, you know, underneath the door, where your, where the teacher's name is, it's also, you know, the university that they attended, just to get kids starting to think about college at an earlier age.
Thank you, Kim.
Okay, thank you, the record shows that, um, Mr. Karat has returned to us, just in time to, um, go into executive session, um, we'll take a, a couple of minute break before we start the executive session.